Six twenty-eight.
I just want to be, I'm not on mute, am I?
No, you're not.
Okay, good. Steve, I think was just, was he trying to talk and he might be on mute?
We've lost Steve. There you go, Steve. We lost you. Okay, well, perhaps Linda will join us. At six thirty, I call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Bella Vista for Monday, August the 24th at six thirty PM. Will you rise and join us please for the pledge of allegiance?
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Wilms?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
And Wozniak?
Here.
All present.
Do we have any citizen input this evening? Nobody's holding their hand up? Okay, seeing none, we'll move. Counsel reply. There are no replies. We'll move into item number four, which is the approval of minutes for the July 27th regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Here. Yes, sorry.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
And Wilms? Larry, you're muted.
Larry, you're on mute. Larry, you're still muted.
He was on there before.
He might have lost connection.
We can see him.
Larry, can you hear us? Shake your head if you can hear us. We can't hear you. Okay. Yeah. You gotta unmute your microphone.
Look up in the right, put your mouse over your screen and look up in the right-hand corner. That's where mine is anyway, and you might be able to see your mute. Just blink once for yes and twice for no.
Mute's in the lower left corner.
Okay, mine's different, but yeah.
Well, he shook his head, so. I'll count it.
All right. So Larry, we'll take your head up and down as being yes. Okay. We'll move on to the monthly financial reports. Carrie sent out the six-month ending in June. We are still ahead on our revenues. We are under on our budgets, which is great. We still have a very strong reserve. Sitting at eight point four million, which is fifty-one percent of restricted. So it's about twice what our policy says that we need to have on hand. That will come down a bit as our, as our paving company begins to do more work, particularly on Highlands Boulevard, which is in real need of a lot of work. They should be starting that this week. I can tell you that we saw the preliminary results for June sales tax. Posted on the DFNA state website. It's stronger than it has been for all the months yet. We up over two hundred and sixty. And the county was five point one million. They had a substantial increase. And of course, we will receive eleven point nine eight. Now, there's still the three percent fees that have to be tacked onto that by the state. If you remember, that's one of the twenty resolutions that AML is trying to get changed. We mentioned that in the conference last week. But nevertheless, it's still there. So once the money's in the bank and we know the actual, then Carrie will do her normal analysis and we'll send it out to you.
Mayor Christie, just a point of order before we move on. Let's, let's take one more shot here and make sure if we can, we're leaving no man behind. Larry, Larry, will you speak one more time? Let's see if we can hear you.
I think I have it turned off.
All right, super. Thank you. Thank you for that.
No, I noticed the symbol had disappeared, so that's good. Okay, entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
Hey, Peter, I'm sorry, but on the financial report, I just, just a real quick question. Yeah, I know we're coming in, you know, we're under budget right now significantly. Year to date through June. So it's about almost hundred and fifty thousand on admin line, two hundred and thirty-two thousand on community development, eighty-three thousand law enforcement, hundred and thirty-three thousand in public safety, and almost eighty-one thousand on recreation culture, which is called the library. So I know you put controls in place, but you know, those are pretty significant numbers. So is, was it driven by headcount and purchases for the departments? How were you able to drive such significant less spending in each one of the departments?
A lot of it is delayed, Doug, because we put the freeze in place in, in early March and we didn't lift it until June. So the department has, if they were going to have, say, a significant purchase, didn't do it. And in some cases, there's a delay of up to two months. For some of the, of the library, for example, one of the reasons that it continues to underrun is that it's not open and the part times are not being paid at the moment. They're off. And we were one head down on the regular, which has just been filled. So there are differences for each, but for the most part, it's delay of spending, which will begin to catch up.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So on the part-time, I've got a question. The part-time at the library that we're not paying them, they're not providing any services to us now?
Correct.
Okay. Because of less active public entry into the facility itself?
That's correct. Plus, some of them have declined to work in the mid of COVID, which is understandable.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. There's nothing else. I'll go back to the motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie takes zero.
Thank you. The first piece of new business is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through March of 2021. Now, I know that this is no stranger to all of you. We do this every year. But for those of you that have joined us, this may be unfamiliar to you. And this is the time of year when we begin stockpiling sand and salt. Because these materials are almost impossible to ascertain through the competitive bidding process due to the fact vendors have committed to other customers and are not willing to take on new customers. Indeed, we look for brokers by means of acquiring quotes. So that's why Mike every year comes and asks us to waive the competitive bidding so that he can get in quickly and get the, the sand and salt without any kind of delay whatsoever. Are there any questions at all? Yes, Larry?
One question would be is how, how do those prices compare with some of the bid prices for our neighbors around Northwest Arkansas?
Our neighbors actually get lower prices than we do because they're buying in greater quantity. We did try a number of years ago to have a more regional approach where everybody would chip in together so that the buying power would be greater, and that didn't go anywhere. Every city wanted to be on their own. But we still get a, a good price.
Even, even when you commit to a certain volume for the year so that the vendor knows what you're actually committing to?
Yes, but it's difficult to commit. You can try and do a minimum. But again, remember, we're very small.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if we wait, we may not be able to get it.
That's correct.
That's true.
Yeah, I like to make a motion. We move to third and final. Second.
So you're now voting on the motion to move to third and final.
All right.
Yeah, it's a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie at six zero.
Thank you, Alney. Now read it for the third and final time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through March of 2021. If there's no further conversation, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So I'll move.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie at six zero.
Thank you. We now move into the resolutions. The first is accepting the financial audit report presented by Landmark PLC for the year ending December 31st, 2019. Again, for those of you at home, this is the second year that we're using an outside firm. In the past, we have used state audit. However, knowing that we were coming up for a bond, the street prefers to see an outside company actually do it for us. We still submit it after you have approved it and send it down to state because they have to have a record for it. We did have a very good audit. We're very clean. It was one of the attributes that S&amp;P last Monday pointed out to Carrie and myself when we presented the city to their folks to come up with a rating for us. Is there any discussion at all?
I, I just have a question. And, and I know, I believe we moved to this two years ago as well. But we've, we've elected or determined to use a little bit different method than what the governmental accounting standards board recommends. Could, could you talk just a little bit about what the differences are between our method and what their recommended method is?
No, I can't. I'm sorry, Doug. Had I known you were going to ask that, Carrie just left. But we do follow GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board. But I'm, I'm not quite sure what the difference might be between the state audit and, and landmark and the actual accounting that goes on. I do know that Carrie's CPA. But that's probably a question for her if you give her a ring tomorrow.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'm going to say kudos, Mayor. Kudos to our finance department and to our management team for putting us in a position to have a good, clean audit like that. Very good.
Thank you. I applaud them as well. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie at six zero.
Thank you. Item C is a resolution approving the appointment of William G. Myers to complete the unexpired term of Lila Smith on the City of Bella Vista Public Library Advisory Board. That term will go to December 31st, 2022. In your packet is Mr. Myers' very impressive personal resume. And the reason is that Mrs. Smith and her husband decided to leave Bella Vista and go back to their roots up in, in Minnesota so they could be closer to their children. Is there any discussion at all?
Well, I'd just like to mention, I've known Bill Myers for a number of years and, and he's very interested in this field, very dedicated. And in fact, he's, he's managed a library at our church for several years and he's extremely organized and has really gotten it in good shape. So, so I know he's dedicated, this sort of thing.
Thank you, John. If there's no other discussion, I'd entertain a, a motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
And Burke?
Yes.
Carrie at six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is approving the mayor's appointment of Aaron Rowe to the Bella Vista Arts Council to fill an unexpected term resulting from the resignation of Janelle Redzlak. And Janelle works for Crystal Bridges as a director and is extremely busy and just doesn't have the time anymore. This unexpired term ends April 22nd, 2021. Aaron is not only an artist, but a very interesting cook. I think I mentioned at the work session that she's actually published a book on Arkansas cooking. You may not want to try some of the recipes because I looked at one apple pie recipe and it was twenty-two quarts of, of apples. So it's obviously for large quantities. But it is a delightful book and she would make an excellent addition to our arts council. Are there any questions at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All right. Roll call. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
And Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie at six zero.
Thank you. Amending the 2020 city budget to authorize one additional part-time police officer to be funded with existing budget and funds. Chief is here. If you have any questions, you may remember at the work session that he talked about using this person to reduce his overtime. This person could also be available out of the court for us. So we don't have a member of the command team out there anymore. And it's part of an overall scheme to put a part-time officer plan in place. You'll be requesting Chief two additional part-times as part of your 2021 budget?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions at all for Chief?
No, so, so this will be, I mean, an individual that, that you will hire. And more or less, it kind of, I mean, I know you'll be able to plan out most of the time, probably when the person will need to be available. But it's, it's almost as well like an on-call kind of situation, too. Is that, would that be right?
Yeah, that, that's correct. What we find many times in law enforcement, you get some folks that, that retire, but they still like being in law enforcement, but they don't want to do it full-time. And so our intent is to, to get some of these folks who retired, but still want to be involved. And, and yeah, they would be used for, for events where we, we could plan. They're used to relieve our, our on-duty staff, like bike events, things like that, overtime for the court and stuff, as well as on-call. I mean, like, as a matter of fact, this week, we, we have a couple of folks sick and we're a little, we ran a little short today. The lieutenant was, the lieutenant was actually out in the field taking calls for service when he has other stuff he could be doing. So this would be an opportunity for, we have these folks already trained up and ready to go. We can try to call one of them in to see if they can come and help us out on, on short notice. So, so yes, they'd be used for that as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Larry?
Uh, Chief, I'm assuming that from your description that you just provided that all of these people would be pre-trained so that we're not dealing with the retraining or providing training for them like we would a new officer off the street?
Yeah, that, that's correct. Unlike a lot of other smaller agencies that have to use these folks because they can't afford full-time staff, our intent is to bring on folks who are already trained, really probably retired folks or folks already, a lot of times you'll get officers working at other agencies that still also do part-time at a, at a second agency just because they need some additional money. So, so yes, we're, we're only going to bring on folks that are already currently trained, have all the standards and training that are required in Arkansas. And, and yeah, that's, that's correct.
So they got post?
They got post, yes.
Okay, so, so I, and I apologize. So this isn't just one, one person that you're going to hire part-time. It could be actually two or three or four people.
Yeah, yeah. So, so what we're trying to accomplish this year, my, my intent is to come to council every year during the budget time and ask for enough funding to, to support three part-time officers on an annual basis. And that's, you know, that's working about one shift a week. So that's probably around eleven or twelve thousand dollars an officer if they actually work a ten-hour shift every week. Okay. But the intent right now, because I want to get the program up and running and I have some vacancy savings in my budget because we've, we've had some, some folks that we haven't been able to hire, I want to be able to use some of the vacancy savings I have right now in my current budget to at least get one person on board to help to relieve some of the strain of, of being short-staffed. And then for 2021, I'll come back to council during the budget session and ask for additional fund support, three staff next year. So this will be something that'll have to be authorized by council on an annual basis.
And you're currently one head down?
Yeah, we're currently one head down. Yes.
So, so the assessment that, that I understand budget impact-wise, Chief, is, is that twelve thousand per year per, per part-time officer? So if you had three, it would be thirty-six thousand. Is that estimated?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's a rough estimate. Okay, I'm going to pay them nineteen dollars an hour. And so basically, if I work them, my, my intent is to be able to possibly work them about ten hours a week, nineteen dollars an hour, you know, fifty-two weeks in a year. So if they actually all work that, it'll probably be around, I don't know, ten or eleven thousand dollars an officer at the most.
There is a small impact on lobby. I think we calculated it fifty-nine dollars a month per head.
Yeah, the only other expense is lobby, which is fifty-nine dollars a month per head. And that'll also be figured into the budget. But what's, what's going to be nice about this, if, if I started to run short somehow in my payroll because of unforeseen circumstances, I just wouldn't use these officers. But I understand, you know, my, my, my overtime officers, if I bring an overtime officer into cover a shift, I'm probably paying them about thirty dollars an hour at, at minimum. Whereas I bring an individual like this into cover shift, I pay nineteen dollars an hour. So, so we'll, 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 we'll see some savings on the overtime. Whereas I bring an individual like this into cover shift, I pay $19 an hour. So, so we'll, 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 we'll see some savings on the overtime side as well.
Thank you.
And for those of you again at home, the acronym LOFTI is actually a mandated fire and police retirement fund that is run and operated by the state. And every city that has a police or a fire department has to pay into it. There is no exception.
Well, no, you do have an option. You can go LOFTI or ABERS. LOFTI is only for police and fire. ABERS covers everybody, including police. Depends which way you go.
Right, but we're only talking about fire and police at this point.
And LOFTI, as far as law enforcement environment, is a much better way to go.
It is.
But aren't there some exclusions for smaller communities that if you're under a certain size, you're exempt from contributing to the LOFTI even though you may have people that are enrolled in the program?
It's all or nothing, Larry, and you don't have to do it if you don't want to. It's optional.
Okay.
Doesn't make, size has got nothing to do with it. But once one person in the department is in, everybody's in. But it's optional. You do not have to go with LOFTI.
Okay. It's a good program for our people, though.
Absolutely.
It's an excellent program.
If not, I'd still be working.
All right, are there any more questions?
Carrie.
Chief, you wouldn't have a job. All right, if there's nothing, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Osniak.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a three-year lease contract with Stronghold Data LLC in an amount not to exceed $17,769.81 for the lease of Dell computers and associated equipment. In your packet, there's a detailed technology acquisition proposal that has been put together by Dell. As we mentioned to our S and P rating folks again, our strategy for keeping cyber attacks away from us is, or includes, not having any computers older than five years. And when Carrie, gosh, three years ago did a, a purchase versus lease analysis for me, it became obvious it's much better to have a lease because at the end of five years, these things are worthless. And now you're left with boat hangers, sorry, boat anchors. And so, so if you lease, then you give them back and that's Dell's problem and they probably pull it apart and use a lot of the other parts over again. The reason we're coming to you, even though it's less than $20,000, is because it is a lease and every lease must be approved by council. John's here, if you have any questions.
No, it's the right way to go. That's about all I have to say about it.
Yeah. Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Osniak.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
And Flynn.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The last resolution is establishing the salary for the mayor to be effective January the first, 2021. Councilmember Flynn, this is yours.
Yes, after last week's work session, the mayor, you'll recall, we had one on that was the mayor and city council and the city clerk. The mayor withdrew that and I wanted to still have something on there, so I put this on. And the intent is to give two and a half percent raise one year and two and a half percent the next year. And Carrie Elston has gotten back to me and gave me some numbers that were slightly different from this. But before we get into that, I want to tell you the rationale. You know, it was mentioned last week about the COVID thing and obviously we're in an extraordinary year this year. So I looked up some stats. Arkansas in June had an unemployment rate of 8.1%. And at that time, Northwest Arkansas was at 6.3%. In July, Arkansas was dropped a full percent to 7.1%. So point being, we're doing a lot better than the nation as a whole. I couldn't get the local ones for July. I guess they don't put them out that quickly. But it certainly would appear that it's somewhere between five and six percent based on what happened Arkansas-wise. So I, I guess, point being, and you know, our budget's gone better than we expected it to this year. So, point being, the rationale about the local economy, I'm not sure quite holds water. And Bella Vista in particular, almost 30% of the people are retired, so I suspect their income is the same. Walmart and Sam's is still working. Vendors that sell to Walmart and Sam's are still working. Everybody with the city, city and county is still working. All the teachers are still working. Real estate's exceptionally strong. So I don't think that economic rationale holds water. Second point is more on the pay. What I've always tried to look at for the mayor is what some of the other cities are doing in Northwest Arkansas. And of course, some of them are bigger and stronger than us and have more revenue. We all know that. So I called Glenda because she had looked at some numbers and she had numbers on the pay of most mayors in Arkansas from the municipal league. Some people didn't report, but she had most of them. But Bentonville was at 139,000. Rogers was at 156,158. So even if you, this entire raise is 5% raise and put that as the numerator, you know, the 102,000 something figure, and denominator, the average of those guys, our pay would be like 69% of those other cities. And that's what, really what I want. I want us to have a significant gap between us and these big cities that have so much revenue. So I feel like that's, that's an effective gap. And one thing that's always kind of bothered me is the fire chief makes more than the mayor. And now we have a couple other people making more than the mayor. And one thing we have to think about with the mayor's pay is it creates a little bit of a ceiling up to a point for all these department heads that are under him. I mean, you might get some department heads get a little bit over him now and, now and again. But you're not going to get department heads way, way, way higher. And so, you know, we're competing with these other cities for people. I want to make sure there's some room for our first-level supervisors, so to speak, that we continue to get quality people. So I, I'm concerned about that. Now, to me, this, this is an unusual situation compared to the private sector because there's two aspects of it. One is the current occupant, what you think is fair for that. And I think Peter's really done a good job. But the second thing is, is having it at a decent level for the future, so quality people running for mayor in the future. What a lot of cities do is they do nothing for a long time and then they give a big increase. And then the newspaper goes, oh my God, they gave a 25% increase or 30% increase to the council or the mayor or whatever. So I think it's much smarter to do it on a more regular basis and in smaller amounts. So Carrie Elston got back to me, and so those are my intellectual arguments. Carrie Elston got back to me with slightly different numbers. So 2021 would be 99,589.98. And 2022 would be 102,079.73. But the point being, trying to be a two and a half percent raise each time. That's what we were going for. So that's the motion I'd like to make, that we would increase, set the mayor's pay at those amounts for 2021 and 2022.
So, John, you, really at this point, you need to, to move to amend the proposal with these corrected numbers, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yes.
I'm amending the correct the proposal with those numbers.
And I'll just tell you, just where did the number come from? I, I calculated it. I, I had taken that prior number from the prior proposal, took 5% off and then added back two and a half percent each year. But I'm not the number person. Carrie is. And so she, she, I would trust her number on that. So I'm sure this is correct exactly to the penny. So that's where that number that you have now, I'm just saying.
Just before we move into the vote on this, for those of you watching, you may be wondering why on earth are we talking about salaries at this time of year? We have an ordinance on the books that says that we address salaries every two years. We don't do it every year. And it's usually in an election year so that if we're going to increase the salaries, particularly this year for the council members, then those who might want to run would have an opportunity to know what their reimbursement or, or what their compensation would be. And so that's why we do it every year, or sorry, every two years. So we'll do it again in 2022. At the work session, there was some thought that maybe we shouldn't be doing any at all because there were so many people that were out of work. And I think that's why John has been talking about the Northwest Arkansas experience and the low unemployment. But we did originally, or I did originally put in a resolution at the work session that included a two and a half percent increase, not only for the mayor's position, but for the councilor's position and the city clerk. And as a result of the feedback, then I believe, John, you decided not to do anything for the councilors or the, or the city clerk, but just concentrate on the mayor. Would that be a, a fair comment?
Yeah, I, I, well, since people had some reluctance, particularly as to their own pay, and the rest of us are all part-time, this is the one full-time job. And this job also has the situation that it affects those first-line supervisors for the mayor. So I was concerned about that also. But, you know, the attorney mentioned we could change compensation anytime, but really this is a, aside from the election theory, this is a logical time to do it because of budget. Try to change it some other time, then they'll say, oh, wait a minute, you got to change it if you want to do that. So, you know, if you're feeling better about things and you'd like to look at council next summer, you could do that. But I, I felt council was reluctant about their own compensation with the coronavirus and all. But I, I still felt something was appropriate for the mayor. So that's why I'm putting this forward.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
I'll second it. Okay, so.
Okay.
Let's, let's amend. To amend. According to Mr. Flynn's motion to amend, the 2021 figure would be $99,589.98. And then beginning January 1, 2022, it would be $102,079.73. I have that written. By rules, your amendments have to be in writing. I have it written. So, Mayor, I believe that motion will be in order.
Well, before we go on, I mean, shouldn't we just talk about the overall prospect of increasing a salary, not just for the mayor, you know, first? I mean, we haven't really had a conversation about it. John presented his case and I.
Well, hang, let me, this is just on the amendment. So after you vote on the amendment, then you'll still have the full resolution to debate.
All right, all right.
Are we ready for a vote on the, on the amendment?
I think so, yes.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, so roll call vote on the amendment.
Hold on, discussion.
Well, we are going to come back and discuss it after, after the amendment.
We need to have, I just want to get clarification before we vote. I want to.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so I have one amendment in front of me in writing. We're looking to, I'm sorry, one proposition in front of us in writing. We're looking to amend that just to adjust the amounts of the raises.
Right.
Is that what we're doing? So that they're precisely equal to two and a half percent?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's still a, a kind of a two-part, one effective January 1st next year and the other effective January 1st the year after. Is that still correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just want to get clarification.
Sure. Anybody else need, ask some clarification at all?
Yeah, this isn't to pass it. This is just to get the numbers right.
Correct.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call then on the amendment. Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Councilmember Flynn.
Yes.
Osniak.
Yes.
Wills.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Carrie, zero.
Okay, so now we have an amended resolution in front of us. Now is the time. Doug, do you want to kick it off?
Sure. Um, so John, I mean, I appreciate, you know, all of your analytics, you know, behind your rationale of what you want to do. And I, and I do really appreciate it. And I guess my point would be, to start off, is that's the process that should have, should have taken place in the first place, but it didn't. Whenever this was first proposed, and I read it, I was really disappointed that we didn't take it up in conversation at a work session prior to actually putting it on an agenda. Because I, it didn't feel good to me in this current environment. Granted, we're, we're in a, an area of the country here that still is basically prospering for the most part. But there still are people out there that are hurting. Go out into the restaurant industry and I think you'll find plenty of people that maybe don't feel quite as good as the conversation you were just having. And then just, it's just the overall, just the overall environment. It's more than just jobs and salaries. It's, it's also, you know, children not being able to visit their elderly parents. It's about people who had to be very protective relatives, you know, that have health concerns. So it's an overarching, it's an overarching thing that we're all, all in this, this situation together, whether you are as affected as, as someone else or not. So whenever I first saw it, I was, I was just like, I, I was, I was a little astounded, quite frankly. And again, I think we could have had a conversation before it actually got on the agenda. And we could have flushed through some of this before we, we initially saw it at the work session. Because, you know, for me personally, I do realize I am up for reelection. Doesn't mean I want to be here January the first. So I took it a little more personal maybe than what I should have. And, and these conversations should be about positions and not necessarily about people. It's about city council members. It's about mayor. It's about city clerk, not, not people. And during the work session, the conversation actually turned to a conversation about an individual, and I don't think that's really where it should go. And I know that our mayor works really hard and I will be the first person to acknowledge that, manages a budget exceptionally well, does a lot of really good things. So that's not an issue with me. But I will say, so there, there are a couple of side notes to this as well. I, I, I was reading, reading in the paper, the Weekly Vista. It says, Mayor Peter Christie said city establishes salaries for council members, the mayor and city clerk by resolution every two years suggested by city ordinance. For the two years, he said, an increase of 5% is appropriate and approved by the city's human resources and finance departments. You know, and, and, and these two people actually work for the mayor. And I'm not sure how this little committee gets together and forms and lands on a percentage, you know, to award or, or, or to, to give to a mayor or, or city council members. I don't really know. But if I'm just reading that and I'm out in the general public, I'm like, this doesn't feel right to me, you know? Now, addressing to the ordinances, and I actually went through and searched our ordinances today, and Jason, you can probably tell me exactly where it is. I don't know where it is. But this is what, this is what I found. It says that this, and this is in regard to the mayor. The city council shall annually adopt, no later than July the first, in any given year, a resolution setting the compensation for the mayor for the following calendar year. Part B, if the city council fails to set or adjust the compensation to the mayor by July the first in any given year, Part B, if the city council fails to set or adjust the compensation to the mayor by July the first in any given year, it is presumed that the compensation last set shall remain in effect. And it repeats that word for word for city council members or aldermen. And I, I, I printed it out. So I don't know exactly, and you could probably tell me where it is, where it says that we address this by resolution every two years. I, I don't even say that it's not there. I just don't know where it is.
No, it's not every two years. That's it, Doug. It, it's, they have done it every two years, but that ordinance that you read is the ordinance, and that's what it says.
Okay, so in the, it's something that, something that the city council needs to take up. I'm not going to say it's like today. This isn't a conversation for today, but this needs to be addressed. And so the way I look at what you just proposed, John, because I actually had a conversation with Jason myself, and, and you talked about two and a half and two and a half. That was the original conversation during the work session, but it didn't really start out two and a half percent. It started out 5% in 2021. And I was going to come back and maybe propose a similar thing to you. And I, I, I don't know if I so much look at this as a raise as I look at it maybe as a cost of living adjustment. The mayor is an employee of the city, essentially. He's an elected official, but he's an employee. The balance of the employees in the city, on average, will receive a two and a half percent raise. Now, it could be a little bit more for some and a little bit less for others or whatever, but the average is going to be two and a half percent. So I really don't have an issue if we want to term this as a cost of living increase, you know, doing that. But I will say that in this proposal that we saw during the work session, if you go back through the documentation behind it, there isn't any rationale proposed. It's just we're going to raise or we're going to, we're, we're going to consider raising the mayor and the city council members' compensation by 5%. But there's no conversation about comparisons across Northwest Arkansas and what they may be earning. And that is really the path we need to take if we're going to do this. So, because I am, I am sensitive to the public and their, their thoughts and their perception about what goes on when public officials consider voting themselves raises. So that's all I would have to say about it. And I know we're going to vote on it, but those are just some of my thoughts.
Okay, the two and a half percent for each year was actually from Glenda. She went out, she belongs to an HR group, the acronym is SHRM, and she went to her peers in all the neighboring cities, asking them what they intended to have as a cost of living increase for their employees. And it came back at two and a half percent. Where we aired, Doug, was twofold. Probably should have had Glenda come in and actually talk about the investigation that she had done. And secondly, we did not catch the fact that we were going to do the full 5% in the first year. That was wrong. It should have been two and a half, two and a half as it's laid out now.
That's fair enough. And, and, and I guess kind of where I'm going with this, the the two and a half percent that's allotted for the city employees, I understand, you know, you talked about other, you know, or you did comparisons with other cities, and that's all well and good. And I think that's necessary. But you know, compensation for a mayor could be a twofold process, if you will. Mayor, we, I mean, any one of a number of things, it, it could go any one of a number of directions. Mayor can be considered an employee of the city, and if it's a, if it's a two and a half percent average for city employees, then the mayor would get a two and a half percent as well. But then there's another conversation, and that is, is our mayor compensated in a manner that that person should be in relation to, you know, other comparative cities in Northwest Arkansas or even in Arkansas in totality. And that's the conversation that you would have with city council members at the same time as well. But we really do need to go look at our ordinance. We need to, first of all, the conversation needs to take place, and the proposal needs to take place. And then you'd have to, you know, write a new ordinance and vote on it and whatever. But in, in my perspective, just taking it just a minor step forward, I don't know if really compensation for the mayor, city council members and the city clerk should be solely in the hands of city employees. I'm not so sure. We shouldn't form some committee, maybe with a, a public at large or not. And I'm, I'm not proposing anything right now. I'm just talking. But I, just the way all this unfolded, it would, it begs to a larger conversation at some part that this needs to be addressed, and it needs to be fixed, and it needs to be buttoned up. So we're not you know, taking detours here and there and not having a, a defined kind of regimented process.
Where were you two years ago when we did this?
Well, you may remember.
I think you're addressing me directly, Jim. Is that correct?
I am.
I was, I was here two years ago, but this didn't unfold in the same manner. And there was a lot of analysis put behind the increases for the mayor and the city council members at that time.
I don't remember that.
It was, well, it was. It was. Just take my word for it. Go back and look at it.
Well, what we did, you know, what we did, Doug, was we repositioned all of them two years ago because they were not where they should have been. Cola aside, we moved everybody up, and you may remember that.
I do, I do. My kids doesn't remember it, but I do.
Right. And so I had Glenda go through the same exercise this year. We're fine. There was no reason in the world to reposition any of the salaries at all or exactly where they should be.
But an increase was proposed.
Yeah, I, I'd like to.
It's a cost of living increase, yes.
On that, if I could. I, I know Linda wants to speak also. So let's, let's try to get around the table and hear everybody's input. I would want to start by acknowledging really a very strong work ethic on the part of our mayor, brings high energy. Being mayor does not an easy job. It, it's, there's high expectations for it. We need a high, a high-energy person with a strong work ethic, and we've got that in Mayor Christie. From there, I'd like to say, make a distinction also between city staff and elected officials. City staff, and again, appreciate Mayor Christie's efforts to create a meritocracy in our organization whereby performance is rewarded. It can be rewarded, rewarded with, with salary increases and other, other ways of recognizing employees for, for strong performance. And I, I see those things have been implemented here. And that serves all of Bella Vista very well. It served these who have chosen by way of their careers to work in a city function. And so I think giving them every consideration for their performance, for their, for their merit, for their results, and nobody should be capped out, not even than the department chiefs, especially not the department chiefs. I've had, over the course of my career, I've had several instances where people who reported directly to me made more money. And that can be for a variety of reasons. It could be for their skills and their expertise and their results. So I don't think that's unusual. I think there, and, and I don't think we should be guided by the mayor's salary being a limitation on anybody else in the organization. And I trust the mayor is, is experienced and understands that, has seen that happen before, and would not limit what we need to do to retain good employees across the board for the city. So those things having said, having been said, I want to make a distinction now between elected officials. And I see it pretty simply and pretty clearly. The responsibility of the city council is to ensure that the salary that we offer for is right-sized to comparable cities or functions. I've seen, I've, I've tracked back now to May of 2016, where the mayor's salary at that time was $73,600. And I've tracked through in six, 2016, when a outside firm was hired to do an evaluation comparing our mayor's salary to the market and reported back that we were out of whack, and we needed to make some adjustments. And so since that time, and, and that happened again in 2018, not by way of a third party, but by way of our director coming, making a presentation, showing us the numbers, showing us how we were out of whack. I thought that was really useful. I was an observer at the time, not a member of the city council. But since May of 2016 to today, a four-year period, the salary for Bella Vista mayor has gone from $73,600 to now $97,161, an increase of 32%. So I think that's our only function. It is not to give merit increases for an elected official. That really, I think, skirts around what we've talked about, and that is this is not for a person. This is for an, a, a position, an office, an elected official. And I don't think we're here to give merit increases. With all due respect to, to the effort that Mayor Christie puts in, I'm going to oppose these increases. I appreciate the fact that we do this every year. And so at a very minimum, if you want to find common ground, a compromise here, I would be willing to agree to the two and a half percent cost of living adjustment for next year, but no future years. We will address that next year. There's no sense in getting ahead of ourselves. We have an ordinance that addresses a sense in getting ahead of ourselves.
So Steve, Steve, you've used interchangeably. If there is merit increase.
It's been Frank's, the way it was. Doing a really good job. Try to reward. I think it's very, we, as a council, about whether we think that our reason we ought to not, we ought to leave it alone.
Linda?
I have a if indeed I'll do this in July. Be doing it.
No, do it in July, and then in the next sentence it says, but if was. What? Anytime. Leave accounted official salaries at and do it. It, it's why, but it's presumed the same, not dictated that it consider it at any time. The only real terms to elected official salaries, and it's important to note, is that it cannot be decreased during the elected official's term of office unless that typically requests it. So once the remainder of that term of office, it cannot drop unless that person requests it. So in terms of the mayor, you could, there'll be two years with a new, with, with a mayor taking office in January of 2020, the 2023, then you could have adopted an ordinance, or excuse me, a resolution that would reduce that salary beginning with the next term. You could do that, no matter who's mayor. So, but during the term, it cannot be reduced, and you can address elected official pay at any time.
And we can do it for more than one year?
You can do it. I mean, you could set it, and of course, it would be the same until you change it. Or you could, you, you just, you could you couldn't reduce it during the elected official's period of, of, of term of office, but you'd put a burden on yourself to reset it again in the future if you put a time on it or something along those lines. So it's normally, I mean, normally the position, the elected official salaries are set and they stay that way until you change them.
So Steve, am I hearing then that you might be putting an amendment forward just to have the two and a half percent cola for 2021?
Yeah, that's, that's a middle ground, if you will. That's how I get on board. Why we'd be addressing a year when we have every opportunity to do that next year is beyond me at this point.
Okay, John, is that acceptable to you? As the sponsor of the resolution?
Well, I have a couple of thoughts. One was, the reason I made it two and a half percent over a couple of years is why I'd heard there's another member of council, heard from a third party, that another member of council was thinking along those lines. And I did think it was kind of a olive branch to people who didn't want to do 5% right away, that it was already meeting people in the middle. I didn't think, I, I don't think Steve did this unaccurate, but I didn't think his characterization of my presentation was 100% accurate. Yeah, you could argue it's partially on merit, but the part about comparing to some of the other mayor's salaries in the area is more of an argument of pegging it in the right place. You know, but even with this thing isn't even with this increase, we're at 69% with some of these other cities. So I don't feel like we could be accused of being overly generous or something like that. So I have multiple arguments, really, is what I'm saying. Say, I believe that ordinance predates me, but I think the rationale for the July 1 was partially that people would know what the compensation was. So we're a bit remiss this year because the idea is that the world knows what the compensation is when they decide to run for city council. Or they decide to run for mayor. Of course, you're only upset, but there was three, a number of people decided to run for city council this year before we did anything about the pay. The idea is to do something about the pay ahead of time so they know what it is when they're deciding to run. That was my reason July 1 was picked.
Yeah, but we're not talking about city councilor increases. Why wouldn't we do that as well for the mayor's salary?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, it would be, it would be good to, in the future, to do it. I was just explaining why I thought July 1 was picked. And I think one of the ideas was to tell people who are running, oh, look, here's what it did, you know.
I think that's the way. If I remember correctly, that's the way Frank positioned it. When I was observing back in 2014. I will tell you that the reason that we didn't do it by July the first was frankly because we still were a little nervous about the sales tax coming in. Are we going to be in a good position or not? Well, it turns out that we are in a good position.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Yeah, we, with the two-month lag, we really didn't know what we were dealing with. That's a very good point.
And that's why I sat with Mr. Kelly, and he explained to me, yes, it says July the first, but really, you can do it anytime you like. So Steve, Steve, would you like to put an amendment forward just for January 1, 2021, for the 99,589.98, and strike the second year beginning January the first, 2022?
I want to make sure we've heard from everybody. You kind of, I don't know, Larry or James have had a chance to speak.
Okay, Jim, I see your hand.
Well, you know, I've been here longer than anybody. And some of the reasons why there was big jumps in the mayor's salary, the first four years, Frank didn't take any money. And then they finally convinced him, because we didn't have any, basically, we were meeting in his house. And then they finally convinced him to take a salary. And then for his next four years, he never took a raise. He left it there. And then when we got change of management, there was a big old gap, and some of the compensation was to get it where it needed to be. So some years, there was a really big jump in there, and some years, there was a small jump. But it started much more than artificially low. And some of that is ketchup, or has been ketchup, and not the kind you put on your hamburger. But it was because of, you know, the original mayor doing the right thing at the time, because he didn't need the money. He was doing it because he wanted to do it, but he didn't take compensation for four years. And then when he finally got some, he refused to take a raise. So some of them jumps are quite substantial, just trying to get caught up.
Understood. And, and where, where are you at on today's proposition?
I go two and a half, two and a half, or if you want to go two and a half, I'll go there.
I think it's a good, it, it, it's a good place to be. I mean, if, if this is supposed to be, is here proposed that annually, before July the first, well, you do this year to your point. See, I think you made a good point. Why would you go ahead and do that for next year? When everybody can take a step back to take a breath and go through an official process, if you will, you know, to figure this out. And that could be with could be with, you know, most, most if not all the current council members. It could be with three that are here today and maybe three new ones next year, you know, with fresh eyes. I don't know how that's going to unfold. But the, the, it, it's set by ordinance at the process. But, uh, the, 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 it, it's set by ordinance that the process is here to review it annually. So why, why wouldn't you do twenty twenty-two, uh, during the twenty twenty-one, timeframe?
Okay, Larry, we haven't heard from you.
Uh, I, I guess my thoughts are is, is that there seems to be a tone coming across that, uh, we need to set the salaries high to, uh, uh, be incentivized people running for office. I think that's the wrong reason for being in the position we're in. I think the reason for running for office is because you want to provide, uh, and contribute to local government in a constructive way, uh, and, and that might have been one of the rationales behind Mayor Anderson and his, his position. Not only that, but starting out, they had no money at all. Uh, but that might've been his rationale as to why he didn't take salary increases during the early years. Uh, I think that, uh, we look back over, uh, our recent increase here. Uh, I believe in two thousand and seventeen in July. I don't know what the effective date was, but that was the data that's decision for the big bump for the mayor's position to go from seventy-three, six up to something more. Um, I, I think that the voting there, if you go back and look at the record, it was a tie vote and the, the, the presiding casting vote was made by the mayor to, to approve that rate increase, salary increase for not only the mayor, but the clerk and the elected councilman. So, uh, it begs the question is to, had, had the question been split at that time, uh, how would the vote have turned out? Uh, and I think that, uh, not I would apologize if any of my comments were taken at the work session to be personal. It was not intended that way, nor was it meant that way. While they may have come across in that tone, uh, I would certainly apologize to Mayor Christie if he, if he took it personally because it was not intended that way. My perception is, is that the position that we have uh, for the mayor in, in Bella Vista is not the same as the position for the mayor in other neighboring cities here or even in other cities around the state of our size. Uh, we don't have the same type of, of, uh, structure. We don't have the same type of complexity in our operation that other cities do. But by the same token, you might say we have a more complex operation because of the P O A and the fact that the developer is still, uh, hands-on in a lot of the activities going on here in the city. Uh, my feeling is, is that we're not out of the woods yet with COVID. Uh, and, and there's a lot ahead of us that while our sales tax has been strong, uh, I think we need to be cautious, in my personal opinion, cautious so that we don't get ahead of ourselves. I think that in for elected officials to take a raise at this time doesn't set a good example, even though I know the mayor works hard. Uh, I give him a lot of credit for that. He carries, he carries a lot of weight and he does promote the city well inside and outside of our area. And so I give him a lot of credit for that. Uh, but I, but I do think that at this point in time, it, it doesn't necessarily show well, uh, for the elected officials to take an increase right now. And even though this is effective on January first, we, we've got another four months to go. And we don't know where we're going to be with this COVID thing and other economic impacts that could affect us severely. So I'm, I'm, I'm not, not enthusiastic about supporting it.
I, I remind you, this is not a repositioning of the base salary based on comparison to others. That's been done and it's finished. This is a call, this is a call up. And the mayor is, is concerned to be an employee of the city.
I understand that.
So this is twenty-two hundred dollars that we're talking about.
I, I do understand, I understand what, I understand what the proposal is, Mayor Christie. It's clear in my mind that it's an increment over your current salary or the current salary for this position. I, I would say a couple of more things and that is that I would be, uh, inclined to want to, uh, change the starting salary if a new mayor, not you, if a new mayor were to be elected in two thousand and twenty-two for the following year. It's not uncommon because you're bringing a newbie on board and should be starting off at a base salary a little lower than what the executive who left with lots of experience and, and an ability to perform at a high level. So, uh, that will be something that will be coming as we go down the road.
And I believe Mr. Kelly said that that is something that can be done.
That's correct. You can, uh, you can set a salary that's lower that begins with the next term of that office.
Right, yeah. And that would, that would be the intent if we have a, a newbie, uh, elected and you choose not to run and, or not successful in reelection, uh, I think that the salary should not be the same because that person is not bringing to the table what you have to provide. Because of your experience.
Thank you. Steve, um, I think we've heard from everyone now. So do you want to voice an amendment for just twenty twenty-one?
Mayor, I think for tonight, I, I'd be content to, uh, either, either we're going to call for a vote on the current amendment or not. Uh, either way, if, uh, if this amendment doesn't pass, or this resolution doesn't pass tonight, then I'd be happy to bring a resolution next month.
All right, that's fair.
Since the, uh, since the increment doesn't begin until January first, we could table it, if you would like, to the next meeting because it wouldn't affect or impact anything.
That is true. That can be done.
I think that's appropriate.
John, would you like to table it?
Oh, why do you think it's appropriate to table it, Doug?
Well, because Steve's probably maybe going to come back with a, uh, an amendment next month.
Let's just do it that way now. And when next month we can kick it up if we want to, or next year we can kick it up.
And I don't disagree with that either.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't get it nailed down because, uh, we'll be working on the budget and whatnot. We have other important things to do. I, I'd be willing to offer an amendment, uh, that it just be uh, for the one year for twenty twenty-one and be the ninety-nine, five eighty-nine and ninety-eight cents.
Okay, we have.
We could go ahead and vote on that.
Is there a second?
I'll second up.
Okay, we got Steve seconding. Is there some more discussion? All right.
Okay, so we're voting on the second amendment.
Oh, just a second. Yes, Linda.
The, there is another way to look at it. If you, you, there's nothing that says two years out, the cost of living increase might be five percent.
That's true. That's very true. Okay. Okay, voting on the amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Councilmember Flynn.
Yes.
Osneyak.
Yes.
Wilms.
I will, I have to vote no, based on the calls that I've received.
Okay, Fowler.
Yes.
And Burke.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's passed five-one.
So the resolution now reads, establishing the salary for the mayor to be effective January the first, two thousand and twenty-one, the annual salary compensation for the mayor shall be as follows, ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents annually, beginning January the first, two thousand and twenty-one. That's it. Is that, is that the same thing that you've got, Jason?
Uh, and then there's a section too that just says that the benefits are unchanged.
That's right.
That remains in the resolution.
Okay. All right.
What should you approve?
Okay, is there a second there?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Wayne.
Okay, we'll call a vote on, uh, uh, as it stands with, for the one year. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Uh, again, I'll have to vote no only because of the calls that I've received.
Okay, Osneyak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Carrie, five-one.
Okay, thank you. That was a good discussion. Um, Doug, we're going to have to, um, really dig down and, and have a look at that ordinance and make sure that it's, uh, worded, I think, a lot better than it is today.
I, I, let me, if I could chime in a little bit there, that, that ordinance definitely needs to be either rewritten or outright repealed because you can consider salaries at any time. But to have a law that says you must do something and then say it's okay if you don't is really not a law. So we, we need to either decide that it needs to be done or that it's always discretionary or, or something. But I do recommend a change of some sort.
Okay, thank you. Good point. Okay. That ends the resolutions and the ordinances. Meetings and announcements. There is a special council meeting on Tuesday, the first of September at five-thirty by Zoom. This will be, um, presented, it'll be a bond ordinance that'll be presented by Ryan Bowman, who's our bond attorney. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, September first is the date when the bonds will be sold on the marketplace and, um, traditional, well, not traditionally, but usually the same day that the sale is finished is when the ordinance comes through. And this will tell us exactly how much has been sold, what the interest rate is, et cetera, et cetera, all the nitty gritty that we really don't know at this point. The next city council work session will be Monday, September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty and five-thirty by Zoom. The next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, September twenty-eighth and six-thirty by Zoom. Planning Commission Work Center will be September the third, two thousand and twenty and four-thirty by Zoom. The Planning Commission Regular Meeting will be September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty and four-thirty by Zoom. The Board of Zoning Adjustment, excuse me, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty and five-thirty also by Zoom. And Board of Construction Appeals will be September the eighth, two thousand and twenty by Zoom meeting. I want to thank you for the good discussion tonight on all the points. Um, I wish you and, and your families a happy Labor Day. The office will be closed. Uh, I believe Monday, the, uh, the seventh of September and we will reopen for business as usual or as usual as it is these days on, on Tuesday, the eighth. So thank you again. Good night.
Good night.
Uh, Mayor Member won't be here in September at all.
Yes, sir. I got that. Thank you.
All right.
Hey, thank you.
We tried, John.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.